...of April 23rd, Board of Education. Thank you all for being here. We packed house, which is great.
Hang on.
I would open up to any public audience. Does anyone have anything that they would like to share? Questions, comments? Otherwise, we're moving on to Board Administration and Communications. Valerie.
I'm going to keep my report very brief tonight because I know we have a long night ahead of us.
Thank you.
Overall stuff, we have the Take Action Clubs from Toot and Hills, Latimer Lane, and Squadron Line that have focused their social justice efforts this spring and collaborated with Rise Against Hunger. They exceeded their $3,500 goal and raised $6,055.97, so we're super proud of them. Toot and Hills Student Council held Blue Day on Tuesday, April 2nd, in support of World Autism Day. For Tara Phil, they are holding their school sneaker drive from April 22nd to May 13th. The drop-off bins will be found in the school lobby. For Central, on May 1st, in celebration of National Read Across America Day, Central School participated in a school-wide Read-A-Thon and collected over $5,000. At Latimer, the 6th grade had their chorus concert on April 18th, and the 5th grade will be holding theirs on April 30th. And then, May 8th and 9th will be their annual art show. Nothing major to report on Squadron other than the Take Action Club. For Henry James, they'll be holding their 12th Annual Lunch and Learn on Thursday, May 9th, 2019. For Simsberry High, we are having the Laramie Project, which is our spring play. It'll be on April 26th, 27th, and 28th. It's a moving show that contains content and language that is best suited for mature audiences, so fair warning. We actually are super proud to honor an SHS art teacher. Megan Lavoy was honored for excellence in art education. She's been named Connecticut Art Education Association's 2019 Connecticut Outstanding National Art Honor Society Sponsor or National Junior Art Honor Society Sponsor Art Educator for significant contributions to the field of art education, so congratulations to her. And then, any juniors who are interested in taking over my position for next year are urged to sign up in Mr. O'Brien's office, and applications are due this Friday.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll make note that all of our principals from all of our elementarys are in the room tonight, and you can be very proud of all your kids for everything that Valerie was able to share with us. Thank you all very much.
Doing an amazing job.
Thank you very much. I'm Valerie.
Of course.
Nothing to report.
Lydia.
Yeah, briefly. I attended the NSBA Annual Conference a few weeks ago in Philadelphia, and we had 6,000 attendees. And it was, we had two board meetings. As you know, I sit on the Board of Education, on the Board of Directors for NSBA. And we had four straight days of jam-packed, everything, education under the sun that you possibly want to know. So, a big piece of this was the Delegate Assembly, and we had passed about 40 policies and resolutions. And three of the big areas that NSBA is really urging Congress on are fully fund IDA, the census, and school safety and crime prevention. So, at a national level, that's what we are promoting, and of course, at the state level, it's about the same situation. So, with that being said, jump into the state level. The session is sort of midway right now. All committees are done with what they have passed through. The big pieces that are coming through that are going to affect a lot of the districts are the Magnet School Funding Bill, and that's right now before Appropriations Committee. So, that's something that is still on the radar of the legislators. We're not quite sure where that is going to go, but that is something that is, stay tuned, because that is still going to continue to another level. So, right now, as I said, the committees are finished. The revenue package and budget proposals' deadline is May 1st, which is next week. And within some of that is the teachers' retirement. The language was removed by Ed Committee, but it could be also put back. So, you never know until last minute what could possibly happen. And also, the acceleration of the ECS. The districts that would have lost over 10 years, it's now been reduced to four years. So, these are just some of the small things that, small things, they're large areas, but these are just some of the areas that Ed Committee has now passed on to appropriations. So, in Connecticut, six bills were passed by the House and Senate, and that's going to be the end of the bills that were passed. We're going to go on now to the full body. So, that's where we are. We're midway through. Come May 1st, we will read out more what appropriations has to pass forward to the General Assembly, and then it would only be about, hopefully, six weeks until end of session. So, that's what's going on in terms of Hartford and DC.
Thanks, Lydia.
Curriculum committee met this past week. Neil's going to probably have much more to share, but just wanted to let you know that we met and we all reviewed graduation requirements with Neil and Principal O'Brien, and Neil will share that later.
Thank you.
We had our initial meeting of the Sustainability Committee last week. We received a presentation from Sustainability Connecticut, and the way you get your various certifications is through, it's a scoring system, really. So, Tom Roy, and hats off to him, he's doing a huge lift of trying to figure out what we've done that would qualify, and we're trying to gather some manageable projects that will help us get the certifications going forward, so stay tuned for more.
Great. Thank you so much for stepping up to be on that committee. It's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Lepke.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Sullivan.
Excited that one of our big days of the year in the Simsberry Public Schools is this Thursday, April 25th, which is Staff Recognition Day. Celebrations throughout all seven of our schools, and then a district celebration that we hold at Henry James Cafeteria, starting at 3:30. Gathering on the program starts at 4:00. Tara will be making some opening remarks on behalf of the Board for that, and we hope some other Board members will be able to attend. The purpose of the day is to celebrate our longstanding employees, not just teachers, all employees, our secretaries, cafeteria workers, custodians, who have various milestones of years of service at Simsberry, 10, 15, 20, 20, and we usually go all the way up to 45 or 50. So, it's really pretty remarkable, and we also...
53 is the winner this year.
And we have a retiree this year in Patty Grace.
Patty Grace.
After 53 years, Patty will be celebrated for her retirement, along with 18 other retirees who will be honored at that ceremony. So, Thursday, program starts at 4 o'clock at Henry James.
Okay. Speaking of Henry James, to have two quick project-related updates. So, last evening, Principal Scott Baker and I were at the Public Building Committee. We have all of the bids in now. Downs Construction Company coordinated all of the bid process, recommended the vast majority of the bid packages that were approved last evening, and the good news is we're definitely under budget, so it's looking very positive there.
Can you say that again?
Very much under budget at this time. May 6th is the next Public Building Committee meeting. We expect to have the sort of the finalization of the bidding process and the guaranteed maximum price with the construction management firm of Downs. And then, we should be seeing mobilization of forces outside of, on the exterior of Henry James next month. So, to that end, we also have notified the abutters of the project that we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday night at Henry James at 6:00 PM. So, we've sent written letters to abutters, and we'll also send out some flyers to the general neighborhood, just to try to give them a sense of how construction processes will work during the roughly year and a half of that project duration.
Excellent. The meeting you just left was still in process, or have they done anything?
It was still in process, very much in process. The hearing was closed, but...
The Board of Finance meeting is working right now.
They were not debating expenditures, just how to get to mill rate and the proper use of reserves and assumptions on collection.
If it passes tonight, the referendum is, what's the date?
The 14th.
14th of May.
Yes.
Which we just want to make sure we say that enough times, 14th of May referendum for the whole town to get out and vote at Henry James.
Yes.
Is there a possibility it doesn't pass referendum tonight?
It didn't seem to be so, but it's too early to say.
I don't see a reason why they wouldn't be moving it forward.
But I was thinking, like, I don't think there's a contingency penciled in date.
No, no, right now, we're kind of, we're shooting for the 14th. We'll know shortly.
Right.
So, 14th, all day. Everybody out there, show up and vote. Thank you very much. Mr. Curtis.
Nothing this evening.
Great. I don't have anything either. Moving on to the approval minutes for March 26th.
Still move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Moving on to personnel.
Two recently announced retirements for your action tonight. This is a pattern we have seen. You get that week of April vacation, it feels good. You might be near retirement, and we get some folks who come back from April vacation and let us know that they have enough years and that they're going to exercise their right to retire. So, two of my favorite ladies in Simsberry, Sue Kozinski, our chemistry teacher at Simsberry High School, long career in Massachusetts before she came to us 16 years ago, has been our advanced placement chemistry teacher, a staple of that department. And Sue will be taking her retirement effective June 30th, but won't quite be retiring. She and her husband and some of her adult children run a pretty extensive family farm up in Westfield, Massachusetts, so Sue will go have some time to do some more work on the family farm, and I know she enjoys that very much. The other is Paige Collantonio from Central School, our Southern Belle who relocated to Simsberry many years ago. Paige has been a 4th-grade teacher at Central School, raised a whole bunch of Collantonio boys who came through Simsberry High School over the years and are doing great now as adults, and...
Give her a Roll Tide.
I was going to say, you got a Roll Tide!
Give her a Roll Tide.
And Paige has also been instrumental in our team process supporting new teachers. Took that on as a significant professional development growth area for her. So, 19 years of teaching at Simsberry for Paige. Both of these retirements are effective June 30th, and we need a motion.
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Susan Kozinski and Paige Collantonio, effective June 30, 2019.
Second. Anyone have any comments? Questions?
Thanks for your service.
Much appreciation.
Paige was great to my children, and it's just sad and great for the same time, but we're very lucky to have had both of them, and the inspiration that they've given to so many students is amazing. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to adoption of healthy food and beverage. Burke.
Okay. So, this is an annual process that the Board needs to certify, and we have particular motions. Last year, we had a combined motion, and the state, you may recall, asked us to do a second vote, so they really like these two very similar motions, so we're not going to argue. But we will suggest, if you're making these motions, that you can confirm that you don't see as listed rather than reading them.
Thank you.
They're very much similar. But based on last year's data or the current year's data, we would expect that this added state reimbursement would be approximately $20,400. These standards kind of build and go a bit above and beyond the National School Lunch Program standards, and happy to answer any other questions you have, but would recommend approval of these motions.
Anyone have any questions? I'd accept a motion for the first motion pursuant to sections 10, 21, no, 10, 2015.
215.
Maybe you do it.
Why don't I just do that?
Sue?
I can say as listed. So, move that pursuant to section 10, 215F of the CGS as listed be approved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I would accept a motion, another motion. Someone wants to make it? Go, Susan.
Move that the sale of student beverages not listed in 10, 22Q of the CGS provided as listed.
I take a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Who thought that would be hard?
We'll look at the school calendar. This is, you've already established next year's school calendar, the 1920 school calendar. So, the job tonight is the 2021 school calendar. Just to look at the grid, just to give you a few highlights of this calendar. The start is, by policy of the Calendar Committee, last Wednesday in August, and the late Labor Day means we get in a full week and a half before Labor Day. That's kind of an interesting feature of this calendar. Just one of the Jewish holidays this year that falls on a weekday, so Rosh Hashanah falls on a weekend. We will take Yom Kippur on the 28th. Nothing else unusual through the fall. I will note in December, we have, we are recommending, and we have not typically done this, that the 23rd of December be a half-day of school.
That's a great idea.
So, we, that would be new for this Board to accept a calendar with the 23rd being a half-day. I would say nothing else unusual. We will insert a Professional Development Day in March as we set the PD calendar. And then, it carries through, Good Friday is not during April vacation this year, so we will do Good Friday on April 2nd. And because of that early start, if everything works out and no snow, we would be out as early as Monday, June 7th, which is really something. That's about as early as you can get, so...
All right. Anyone have any questions, thoughts, concerns? I think it's excellent to do the half-day before, on the 23rd, because I think that it's going to be really hard for teachers this year when you've got no time before Christmas. It's going to come fast, so I thought that was very thoughtful. Anyone else? I'd accept a motion.
Move to adopt the 2021 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the end-of-year authorizations. Thank you, Burke.
So, these are our standard end-of-year motions, five motions. The first section and the bulk of them relate to financial matters. So, the first motion relates to authorizing the superintendent to renew grant applications for state and federal grants. Second section relates to line item transfers and also to use of a non-lapsing account, but kind of focusing on things that happened that year-end. And then, the second section relates not to financial matters, but to the past practice of allowing hiring teachers over the summer. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to clarify them. Otherwise, we're hoping for motions.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts? It's what we do every year.
Correct.
It's not really anything new. So, I will, we can just go through the motions, if anyone is willing to participate.
It would be important.
Come on, Brian.
Move that the superintendent, with the approval of the Board Chairman, be authorized to hire staff for the 2019-20 school year during the period of July and August when the Board is not in session.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If somebody's, you know, go up top. You want to go up top? Yeah. All right. You want to just start at one?
Yes.
Okay. Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to act as the Board's agent in renewing applications for state and federally funded programs.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number two.
Oh, I thought Jeff was running the show.
Ah, I see how this works. Brian, he's not... All right. Okay. Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Brian, you take the next one.
You've lost where we are now.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
The second one under two.
Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to request Board of Finance approval for the deposit of unexpected funds at the close of this year into the non-lapsing account for unexpended education funds accounts. As authorized by state law, the amount of said deposit will be no more than 1% of the Board's current year operating budget. Unexpended funds over 1% threshold will be returned to the town general fund balance.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent or designee with the Board of Finance approval to approve any and all expenditures from the non-lapsing account for unexpended education funds account.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
We got them all, correct?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, we're moving on to Facilities Master Plan update.
All right, so I will tee that up.
Excellent.
We have a whole team here tonight, so I'd like to introduce Jeff Wozninski, who's the Principal of Techton Architects. And Jeff has been working with us, his team and our leadership team and our building principals, which is why they're here tonight, on the large-scale facilities and enrollment study that was funded in concert with the Board of Finance to really look at three major things. One is a new look at demography, which we will hear about tonight. The second is a current condition study, which we will also hear about tonight. And then, the third leg of this is alternate configurations and different ideas based on what we find out from the first two pieces. So, it is a lengthy and thorough presentation, so I want to get people ready for that, but Jeff and his team had an opportunity to come in last week and present to us, and it's really well laid out, and it will be kind of our onset into the public presentation process, so...
Great.
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Wozninski. I'm principal in charge of, for this project at Techton Architects. I'll introduce the team and their roles in a minute. We prepared a presentation, and as the superintendent outlined, we're going to spend a majority of our time on items 3 and 4, so I'll go over introductions. We'll go over the goals of the project and kind of our charge. Then, we'll go over the demographics. Pat will hit that. And then, we'll touch on the existing conditions. We're about 90% of the way through all the analysis. We have a draft report that, but we're, this presentation is really just hitting the highlights of each school. So, we'll summarize that, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So, before I go on and introduce the team, we just wanted to say thank you to the entire group that we've been working with, all the folks at the school system, all the principals, facilities. All the information that was provided to us was well organized. You should be very proud that usually we're crawling around in basements looking for drawings, but everything was very well organized. We got a lot of information, and the principals were accommodating when we had our multiple walkthroughs on-site, so thank you for that. So, the team, as I mentioned, I'm principal in charge for the project. We have Ed Wodowski sitting to my left, part of the architectural team. Stephen Melagonis and Allison walked through the schools and completed the existing conditions analysis. Malona McBroom, Patrick Gallagher completed the demographics. Suzak Associates, Peter Salola completed the structural items, and he's not here tonight, but there's really not much on the structural that they found. Derek Bride from CES will handle the MEP portion of the existing conditions, and then Ron Bamajon from FUSN O'Neil will handle everything outside the building, site and So, goals of the project really were to take a first look at existing conditions and the educational needs as they relate to the existing conditions. Identify the capital improvements and maintenance requirements, and then really take that information and our recommendations and develop a 10-year plan, kind of a matrix of what needs to be done, roofs, windows, doors, those kinds of things. Obviously, review the demographics and the projections. Then, the next step after tonight, really, is to start looking at alternative configurations or options to consider holistically, master plan-wise, for the community. All along the way, we want to engage the community and explore responsive solutions. So, this is our first public meeting. We've had several meetings with staff and the leadership, but we want to continue that dialogue in a variety of different ways to make sure the community is well-informed. And then, ultimately, we want a long-range master plan for the community. So, I say 10 years, but really, these projects are going to look out almost two decades. Communication, keeping the lines of communication open. We've met several times with district leadership. We meet every third Wednesday in the morning, just as a progress. We're here tonight to present our progress to the Board of Education. We plan a meeting in mid-May to meet with the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force Committee, and then, hope to have a public forum on the demographics and the existing conditions on June 5th at 7:00. So, those are tentative dates at this point. So, I'd like to turn over the presentation on the demographic projections. It's about a 10, 15-minute presentation on our findings there. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm Pat Gallagher with Malona McBroom, and we were charged with doing the demographic study and enrollment projections to give you guys a good sense of where you're heading from an enrollment standpoint, and this will tie in nicely with the facility side of things as we get further on in the master planning process. I'll just give a brief introduction about our firm. We do a lot of this work throughout the state. We've worked in several dozen districts over the last few years, including many of your neighboring districts, including Glastonbury and South Windsor in the last two years. And so, this is really what we love doing, and I love working on projects that'll eventually lead to something that I can see, and it'll be a tangible improvement. I'll give a brief summary of our demographic and housing takeaways. We do have a longer version, if you want to see all of the data. We do have a lot of it there, but I'll boil it down just because we do have a long agenda tonight. On the demographic side, we're seeing a lot of positive trends in town. While most towns in Connecticut have been pretty stagnant over the last seven or eight years, your town has seen modest population growth tied to a lot of the new housing that you've built in recent years. And not unlike many suburban communities, you've seen an aging population with your median age increasing and fewer families with school-aged children. However, we're starting to see that change, and you're kind of at a pivot point right now where we're starting to see births rebound, and as I'll get to in a little bit, we've started to see your elementary projections bottom out and are projecting some growth in the future. Housing's been one of the significant changes in the community in recent years. There's been about 500 or over 500 units that have already been built, and about another 500 units that are approved or for approved projects that are currently under construction. And this has really been concentrated in the center portion of town along Route 10 and Route 202, in the central Latimer and Squadron Line District. And I'll get to a little more details on the individual projects, but because it's multifamily, it tends to produce fewer children compared to single-family. And single-family construction has yet to rebound from the recession, and that's not unique to Simsberry, but that's what we've seen statewide. So, new construction's really been one of the trends that has deviated from your norm. Traditionally, your town, that's been mostly, you know, single-family subdivisions. However, in the last six or seven years, that's really changed, and you've had several large multifamily housing projects, and you've been averaging about 150 new units per year. And so, multifamily are our orange bars here. The single-family market is really yet to recover from the recession. You're averaging about 20 single-family units per year. So, you're pretty far away from where you were at in the late '90s and through mid-'2000s where you were over 50 per year many years. We took a look at the enrollment coming out of a lot of your new housing developments just to get a sense of the magnitude and some of the impacts that these developments will have going forward. As I mentioned, we have over, actually, almost 700 new units that have been built in recent years, most of which are multifamily apartments, and there's another 500 units that have not yet come online but are part of approved and under construction projects. One of the things we looked at is student generation from these developments. So, we compared your October 1st enrollment and identified how many students live in each of these new developments, and what we found was that, on average, out of the occupied units, you produce about .14 students per unit. So, out of those, about 600 occupied units, you're getting 85 students who are enrolled in Simsberry Public Schools. So, the direct impacts of these housing developments are rather low, simply because multifamily developments tend to produce fewer children. However, I think there's a lot of indirect impacts of this development. Neil put together a nice table for me that showed the ages of folks who move into a lot of these developments, and a lot of them are empty nesters, folks whose children have grown and gone, and that may be facilitating turnover of your single-family housing, allowing families with children to move into your single-family stock while some of your older householders move to the multifamily units. Looking at your enrollment over the last 15 years or so, your district peaked in 2004 at just over 5,000 students, and as we go through the presentation, you'll notice that elementary is always the first, is really the trendsetter. They were the first to peak back in 2002. Your middle school peaked a few years later in 2004, and your high school peaked last in 2011. And we've seen declines since the peak as smaller classes have started to enter the system. Elementary and middle school enrollments have seen the sharpest decline, but elementary enrollments are starting to bottom out and stabilize. High school enrollment has declined at less of a rate than the elementary and middle school enrollments. However, as you'll see in a little bit, we are projecting that decline to continue while elementary and middle school enrollments start to rebound. elementary and middle school enrollments start to rebound. Looking at your individual schools, there's been decline over the last seven school years at all of your buildings. However, the rate of decline has varied. Central School experienced the smallest decline. It was actually very stable over that period, and we think that's, again, tied to all of the new housing development that's occurring in that district. And then Terriffill, Squadron Line, and Tooton Hills experienced the largest declines over that period. So getting into our look ahead, we developed 10-year enrollment projections, and we pride ourselves in taking a very deep dive on your housing and demographics and economic data. And we develop a series of different projection scenarios that account for different housing demographic and economic assumptions. And we also obtain birth records from the Connecticut Department of Public Health. Births are one of our best data points for projecting your future kindergarten enrollments. We're able to put them on a map and actually tie them to a particular elementary school district as well. We use the cohort survival methodology, which is the standard method in our industry. It's also accepted by the state as their preferred enrollment projections method in the event that you do a school construction project down the road. This is the standard methodology that they look for. And the basic premise is that the recent past is a good indicator of the near future and works well in towns that are growing or declining at a very stable rate. Persistence ratios are one of the building blocks of what we do, and what they do is account for the growth or decline in a particular grade cohort as they move from one grade to the next. And what persistency ratios do is account for all of the external factors that influence your school enrollments, whether that be home sales, new construction, movements into or out of the district for magnet or private school programs, and economic conditions. And so a lot of those economic housing and demographic assumptions are baked into those persistency numbers. And a persistency ratio of 1.0 or higher means that a class grew from year to year, and if it's less than one, it means it shrank from year to year. So this table shows your historic persistency ratios over the last 15 or so school years, and as you can see, most of your grades have persistency ratios of greater than one. So that means a class grows as it matriculates up to the next grade the next year. The columns on the right represent an average of different grade groups together, and what we find is that you're very stable. You have, on average, about 2% to 2.5% growth in each class as it moves throughout the school system. And with the exception of some of your transition years, 5, 6, and 8, 9, your persistency ratios are generally above one. And transition years are typically where we see persistency ratios less than one, simply because you're more likely to have folks transfer to a private or a magnet program. Kindergarten enrollment is the toughest to project because we don't have a good census of the 0 to 4-year-olds that live in your town, and so births are really our best proxy. And we use a special persistency ratio to estimate your future kindergarten enrollments based on births. And traditionally, it's been a pretty one-to-one relationship. You can see the green line here showing your kindergarten enrollment and the blue line births five years prior. What we've seen in the last few school years is a separation of those lines, meaning that a larger share of your kindergarteners were not born here, and they moved to town between ages 0 to 4. And you experienced your highest birth decay ratio this past school year. We have known birth data through 2018. However, to complete the 10-year projections, we also need to estimate future births for the next five years, and this will account for the last five kindergarten classes in the projections' horizons. So we developed different regression models based on economic and housing variables to estimate future births. And our medium scenario is our preferred scenario, which shows you staying at about 200 births per year, growing to that by 2023. And that really assumes a status quo in current housing and economic conditions. Which leads us into our district-wide projections. So we prepare three separate models district-wide. The medium model being really our preferred. It aligns with all of the demographic, housing, and economic data that we looked at. However, we also recognize that we don't necessarily know what the conditions are going to be seven or eight years from now, and so we prepare the high and the low as kind of what-ifs that are there, kind of as a planning tool if things change in the future. The medium is shown in the blue line, and the next few slides, I'll only be showing the medium projections. As you can see, you're very close to reaching the bottom for your district-wide projections. We're projecting a very small decrease over the next four school years, reaching a low in 2022, 23. And in the last few years of the projections, you're projected to see an increase of about 8%, reaching just under 4,300 students by year 10. And that'll put you at a similar level as you were about five school years ago, just as a point of reference. So this just gives you a breakdown by grade and by grade cohort, and the colors just represent the different data points that we're using to estimate enrollment. So the green is based on preliminary birth data. The 2018 birth class is partial year. We didn't get full year yet for that. And then the blues are based on our projected birth data. Looking at our elementary school enrollment for our medium model, based on our calculations, your elementary enrollment has already bottomed out in 2016 and 2017. This was actually the first school year where you saw a year-over-year increase in quite some time, and we're showing that uptick to continue over the next five school years. And then the final five school years, you'll, again, continue that upward trend but at a little bit less of a pace. And by year 10, we're estimating that you'll reach about 2,284 students, which puts you at a similar level as you were in about 2011. The growth applies to all of the elementary schools. However, the fastest growth is projected at Latimer, Squadron Line, and Central, and these are the three districts that have seen most of that new housing development. So it really aligns with what we're seeing on the ground from a housing standpoint. We're projecting modest growth at Tooton Hills, and Terriffill is projected to stay relatively stable with the smallest growth of about just under 3%. So, elementary is always the trendsetter. They're always the first to peak and always the first to bottom out. And as you'll see here at the middle school level, we're estimating a few more years of decline as those smaller elementary school classes matriculate up to the middle school, bottoming out in year 2022, 23, at just under 575 students. However, once those larger elementary classes start making their way into middle school, we're projecting a rebound, reaching just under 700 students in year 10, so similar to what you were at about two years ago at the middle school level. And the high school is always the last to follow our trend, and so we're projecting a continued decrease, really based on the size of your classes that are already in the system. And we're projecting about a 16% decline over the next school year, or next seven school years, reaching a low of just under 1,200 students in 2024, or yeah, 2024, 25. And then, again, that rebound is occurring last at the high school level, and will start to rebound in years eight through 10 of the projections as those larger middle school classes start to make their way through. And with that, I'll turn it over to the TechCon team.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of great information.
That was very good.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, is there no other questions?
Yeah, that was...
That was, we're all still spinning from all the information. Give us one second to ask questions. I think it would be good. We should do it in sections, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think that's easier for us.
My head is spinning a bit.
Yeah, mine is too. It was very good. There are a lot of very good information on here, as I'm trying to go back. I had some notes, and I can't find where I had them. But your projections primer on a lot of these, and the charts really, and the graphs really are a ta-tail of what is going to be going on in this district in the next, what, up to 2029, I believe? I lost my train of thought in here. 28, 29, so, which really isn't that far off when you think about it, because we're just about, almost in 2020. So it has quite a bit of information on here. So I appreciate, it's something that, if we can get a copy of this...
In fact, we're going to send you, Pat has picked out probably about 18 slides here from a presentation that started at like about 45 or 50 slides. It's, I know when we've done enrollment projections, I find them far more interesting than most of you.
Yes, you do.
I found this really interesting, so I think your interest will rise too. And we'll send you that entire package, which has actually really interesting maps of the town, where you could see kind of the hotspots of the area.
That'd be really helpful.
And I think you'll, I mean, a good kind of half hour spent with that packet of information is very revealing about the town that we all live in.
Right, right.
But I guess one of my questions is, a lot of what we're hearing is, are growths coming out of these apartment buildings? So being that that's transient, in your projections, does it factor for those people to maybe buy into town, leave town? Like, what, how does that shake out?
Yeah, so those persistency ratios that I talked about account for all of those external variables, so that includes, you know, folks that might move into an apartment and then eventually buy a home, housing turnover of rental stock, home sales. And really, the medium model that I presented assumes that the trends that have occurred over the last three or four years will persist into the future. So it does account for quite a bit of new housing growth and folks moving into town.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
That was like my first... I think we're going to have more after we...
Yeah, we might come back to you. We really appreciate that. We'll move on to the next.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you want to, once we pass along the full, if you want to drive any questions through me to Pat, that is very easy to do.
Yeah, that would be good to know. Thank you.
Just have a question. At the public forum, will you be showing these slides to the greater community that would be there?
Very similar presentation, as you'll see tonight.
It would be, because I think that this might, probably the first time that the community, all the stakeholders, parents and residents, will have an opportunity to really see what is going on as we move forward with Henry James. So I think that's, and they'll probably have a lot of the questions, the same questions that we are also going to be having with you.
My suggestion in that vein was if you actually have more of a map look of how the projections shake out, that might be really useful to people who are kind of getting their very first look at it, so that they can kind of see how it's falling.
Yeah, it's nice to know where you land in the middle of it.
Right, because everyone's going to go, "What relation to my house? What does that mean?" And that's really what they're going to start thinking. We're also going to put up a webpage.
Great, great, perfect. Thank you so much. That was great.
Thanks, Pat.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, so we're going to jump into the existing conditions, and the first few slides just kind of set the table as to the organization and how we went about analyzing the existing conditions and how we set up our report. And then we're going to do, I think, like a five-minute kind of touch on the highlights of each school, okay? So for the existing conditions, we collected all the, you know, existing drawings, scanned documents, reports, utility bills. We walked through, the entire team walked through multiple times each facility, both interior and exterior of the buildings. We're in the process of proposing recommendations to remediate the deficiencies that we've listed in, in the existing conditions report. And at the same time, while there was this existing conditions review occurring, we also looked at the programmatic topic, where how does the existing conditions, or lack thereof, affect the quality of the educational space? So we had a couple workshops or one workshop. We'll have more as we move further into the project to talk about these topics. But we had a workshop, and we also walked through the buildings, through that lens, basically, through the programmatic lens. And what we talked about was the alignment with the core beliefs, the strategic goals. We know that some of these have been updated recently. And the conversation at the workshop was really about what works well, what doesn't, and what spaces affect, what layouts affect the quality of your education, whether it be the lack of the size of the gym, or the quality of the space of the gym, or the adjacency relationships of the core facilities to classrooms, or travel distances, things like that. This is a summary of all seven schools, and it's interesting to put up this summary. Basically, it's each building on the left to right. It's year-built, current age of the building, current enrollment, the grade configuration, and then the square foot area. And you can see a large majority of the elementary schools have had numerous additions over the years, with exception to Squadron Line, and that's a 50-year-old building built in 1969. And then the ongoing renovations at Henry James and the multiple additions previous to that, and Simsbury High School. So, as I mentioned at the introductions, we'll talk about the site, structure, architecture, and then the building system survey. And what's included in the building system survey is all of the systems of the building, if you will, the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, fire protection, and safety and security. So we kind of touched on all topics for each site. The way that we set up our report is we have a narrative summary of the existing conditions in each of the topics, so that's a kind of voluminous, if you will. And then we've also provided a rating or prioritization or scale, which is a simple rating, one through five, where one requires the most attention, up to five is in good condition and doesn't require any... So there's a narrative, and then there's a kind of a summary table that gives you a kind of a quick cheat sheet, if you will, of what's needed at each school. So these are just snapshots of how we set up the report. And for each school, at the beginning of the report is a summary of all the statistics of the building, building size, the type of facilities that are, type of systems that are in there, when the roof was renovated, square footage, the size of the site, number of parking. And then, as you drill deeper in, here is the, I know it's difficult to see, the summary table that has the rankings of all the different categories that we reviewed. So you can easily look through this list and see what is needed. We've coupled that with a photo log of each of the schools, both interior and exterior. And then we also have floor plan diagrams corresponding to some of our findings. So the first school is Terriffill Elementary, and the process will be site, site civil, and then we'll go through the vintages of the building, architectural, structural, and then MEP.
Okay. Again, my name's Ron Baumijan. I'm a professional engineer with Fuss and O'Neil. And I'm just going to go through each of the schools and discuss the exterior features, the site items that I looked at during our site walk. A lot of these are going to be repetitive throughout each school. We look at pavement, walkways, playgrounds, athletic fields, access, fencing, and the same thing, basically, for every school. So it's going to be a little repetitive, but some of them have a little different items to look at. For Terriffill, some of the items that stuck out during our site walk was the parking capacity. The morning that I was there, just about every parking space was full. There wasn't a lot of available parking. So there is a shortage of parking. I'm sure during night events, cars are parked all over the neighborhood. Dumpster access, the dumpster is located right now in the outdoor paved play area, basketball court. The fence, the wooden enclosure is not doing too well. It needs to be repaired or replaced. One of the issues with that dumpster location is the fact that I believe that at least in one condition or one scenario, the dumpster truck actually backed up into the basketball hoop itself and damaged the basketball hoop. Also, it's probably not the best place to have a dumpster in an outdoor play area. The drainage at the play area, in most schools, what I noticed was a lot of these outdoor play areas where the playground is, they're depressed within the ground. So there's timber, there's timber wood going around the perimeter of these play areas. I'm assuming that's to keep the mulch ins intact and from spreading out. But what that does is create a tub, and, you know, when the ground is frozen and it rains, or during the spring thaw, water's not going to go down through the ground. It's going to collect water and get muddy. Perimeter fencing, I looked at all the perimeter fencings around each of the school. A lot of schools didn't have it in Terriffill. This one did have a good, solid perimeter fence around most. There were some areas that were damaged, specifically where that number four is on the map. And that's really just from the snowplows pushing snow and pushing the fence over. Access parking areas, where the first number five is on the bottom of the page on the right, it gets very narrow. You have pavement right up against the building. Potential for cars to hit the building is high there. And then there's classrooms, I believe, where the second number five is on the left. So again, you could have cars accidentally hit the building. Parking is extremely tight back there. There's barely enough room for a car to back up without possibly hitting another car. It's not a good situation there. And then, number six, there's been reports of at least one skunk living underneath the mobiles.
Every year.
And I guess the smell gets up into the classroom, so you can imagine.
So you'll see a consistent theme on some of the, on most of the sites, is the access control. So there's good bus flow operationally here on the site, not limited parking...
So there's good bus flow operationally here on the site, not limited parking, just because it's a tight site. But one thing you'll see as a comment is the access control of the site, whether it's during the day or during pickup and drop-off. You wanna start looking at some features there to be able to control the flow during the day and off-hours. So this is a vintage plan, we call it. And what we've done, because a large majority of the building, of the facilities have been added to over time, and you can see the brown, vintage number one, it was built in 1925. So you almost doubled the footprint, more than doubled the footprint, of the original building. But the reason why we did this is because you can't necessarily go walk through the building and say, this building's in good or fair condition, because there's so many different vintages. So that's how we set up the report, so that you can assess each of the various different areas of the building. So structurally, the original building's original wood construction, bearing wall. The additions are steel frame with a techum deck. No real signs of any concerns relative to the structural capacity of any of the, any portion of the building. The exterior steel canopy in the rear, if you're familiar with the building, towards the rear around the gymnasium, I think it was intended to originally connect, connect the portion of the modulators to the new addition in 2009, is damaged and needs to be looked at and repaired. Architecturally, it's not ADA compliant, for those familiar with the school. There is no access, elevator access, to the second floor, and that's a concern that we've listed here. There's antiquated and inefficient storage in the classrooms. So coupled with that inefficiency is that they're not compliant with today's codes for accessibility. Access to the modulators is through the gymnasium, so that presents some programmatic issues where you'll have children passing through the gymnasium, potentially a class, to get to the modulators. So the circulation is disrupted during the day. There's some roof and roof drainage areas that are required for improvement. And then, on the exterior of the envelope, particularly with the original building, you need to, with that age building, you need to start looking at repointing, looking at lintels and things like that, in order to maintain the structural integrity of the building.
So I'm gonna touch base briefly on your MEP system, mechanical, electrical, fire alarm, and safety and security. Again, like you heard on the site and the building, there's gonna be a lot of repetitiveness. Whenever we do a study for a town, you tend to find trends, and you, like a lot of other towns, did, do have trends in what you've been focusing your efforts on. So with this building, you know, you put the last addition on in 2009. In 2009, you did a lot of improvements to your mechanical system. You upgraded your boiler plants, you upgraded your domestic hot water. You did all-new systems throughout the 2009 addition, but you left a lot of the stuff in some of the other parts of the building. So you did do some work in the other areas that you needed to make modifications, and that stuff is in good condition. But there is stuff in there that is, you know, 1950s vintage. So, you know, I do note on a lot of these, you'll see new and old systems. That's just my way of saying you have a lot of new stuff and a lot of old. I'm trying to be really brief on here, because like others, there's a lot of backup with this stuff. And then another trend is limited air conditioning. You know, you didn't, you put air conditioning in the 2009 addition, but you put a little bit in the other parts of the building, but overall, the building's not fully air-conditioned. Your electrical service, that was upgraded as well in 2009, so again, another good thing. But you do, again, have new and old distribution systems in this facility. You did add a generator that was done after that. That was done in 2011, so that's good working condition, and that does back up, I believe, this whole facility. Fire protection and alarm, you did add a full wet sprinkler system to the building in 2009, so that covers the whole facility, so that's a great thing. And you upgraded your full fire alarm system, pole stations, horn strobes, smoke protection throughout the whole facility in 2009. Safety and security, this is definitely an area you've spent some focus on through all your schools over the last couple of years. So pretty much all your schools, and this one in particular, there's full perimeter coverage of all the schools. So you can see somebody walking from the time they come up to the parking lot to anywhere they go around it. And then you have your main entry stations at this school. So, you know, your front doors are locked during operation. If a visitor comes, they're gonna hit the buzzer, and then it's gonna go to the office administration suite to let them in. The majority of the schools that we visited did not have the man locks that I know you're looking to, or are putting into a lot of them this summer. So you're continuing that upgrade process over the years.
So to summarize, Terriffill, we believe the ADA accessibilities should be on the priority list, particularly the access to the second floor. Upgrading some of the toilet facilities, again, there was some spotted renovations throughout the facility. But as a consistent theme, as Derek had mentioned, toilet facilities in general need to be looked at comprehensively. Envelope repairs to the gym and to the original building, replace the modulators with some kind of permanent construction, or replace them, again, with the modulators. But the condition and the location is not conducive to longstanding solution, successful solution anyway. Drainage issues on site, the play areas, as Ron had mentioned, address the parking. Right now, from a security perspective, there was other reports that we reviewed, safety reports that were given to us were reviewed. But the access, having parking immediately adjacent to the exterior of the building is a concern. So some simple solutions for access control would resolve that. Mechanical upgrades, as Derek had mentioned. And then programming. And number eight is a consistent theme, which came out of some of the workshops and the walkthroughs, is the flexible, so schools built in 50s, 60s, 70s didn't really have smaller classroom space that was more conducive to these flexible intervention spaces. So what you're finding is that they take a larger classroom and try to divide it up as much as they can. Most of the elementary schools that we walked through do need this to be addressed, some kind of permanent solution there. Specialized education space, same predicament. And then efficient and adjacent storage to the classrooms is key. And I already mentioned replacement of the modulators.
Okay, so our second school that we evaluated is the Tooton Hills Elementary School. Again, we walked, I walked the site, reviewed similar things that I did at the previous school. This one had a much larger athletic field area, so that's also included in the report. Some of the key features, the items that I picked out, that I noticed when I was out there doing my site walk. Number one, the stair improvement, the site stair is actually a little bit lower than that number one. It's in, it's placed inside an embankment. There's four or five steps, I believe, going up. The railing on that stair does not meet code at this point, so the railing needs to be replaced, or the stair needs to be replaced, along with the railing. Catch basins throughout the site, there's a few that are significantly old, should be replaced. There's sediment inside the catch basin, so it should all be cleaned out long-term. That would affect storm flow. Again, number three, the drainage at the play area, there's a lot of low points, water collecting in the play areas, ponding, and, you know, creating mud. Number four there, the perimeter fencing. Where the number four is located on the map, there is no perimeter fencing. There is no, there's no barrier between, for, to, you know, to keep people out or keep kids in. So you can freely walk through the woods to get to the back of that school if you wanted to, where the kids, if not being watched, they could run away and go through the woods. The athletic field is surrounded by the fence, and a good portion of the southeast part of the site there is also, does have a fence.
So good plus parent drop-off situation. Again, some simple comment, you may wanna consider access control of the site during the day, just to limit access to the overall perimeter of the site. So, vintage plan, again, similar to Terriffill, and I should mention this, all of the buildings are well-maintained. Our findings are such that, and there's been some very good programs to replace building system, components of building systems, but there hasn't been any real comprehensive renovation to address a total building, you know, in a considerable amount of time. So there's been a good program to replace a lot of these various different components, but that seems to be really the challenge, the theme that we're finding, particularly in the elementary schools. So, again, vintages, these marry up with the spreadsheet in the report. Same comment to Terriffill, you know, you basically doubled the footprint. This creates a slightly different challenge, a challenge in the length of circulation for the population of the school. So having little ones travel from one end of the 2000 addition all the way up to the original building is, takes quite some time. And that kind of circuitous planning is a net result of these multiple additions over the years. Structure, steel frame, techum-style decking, so you have a few of these schools similar style. So it's all exposed, so that techum ceiling is kind of that acoustical ceiling. That also is a roof deck, so you see that throughout. Additions are steel frame with metal decking. No real significant issue structurally. Basement, there's water concerns, or penetration issues in the basement area that can be somewhat easily resolved. It does not affect the educational areas of the building. Architecturally, there's relatively minor ADA issues. Access to the stair, a couple smaller rooms, classrooms, ADA issues relative to the millwork, but not, no access to certain whole sections of the building. Building envelope is in need of some renovations, the single-pane windows, caulking, flashing joints, the doors, they're all have seen better days, basically. It's time to start looking at an envelope renovation plan here. Inefficient antiquated storage in the classroom areas, that, again, has been a consistent theme in education, and it affects, to a limited extent, the ADA excess, but it also really affects the programmatic and the function of the classroom itself. We've heard a lot about accessible storage because of the programs that you're teaching in these classrooms. They have to be versatile, and that really does impact the quality of the education. They have to travel a certain distance to a remote storage room in a different portion of the building. And then, the last bullet, as I already touched upon, is just building circulation is a challenge, and just having a, having a five- or six-year-old travel that distance takes quite some time, and sometimes with a bathroom break in between, so it takes away from the educational time. I have three, so.
Both five or six.
So Derek, you wanna?
So, like your last school, you know, you did your last major renovation in 2000, so you did a lot of that here. You upgraded a lot of your main systems. But this school, you did upgrade your heating plant relatively recently. You did that in 2016, so that's good. You do have new and old systems. Again, you know, in the newer wings, you have newer systems. In the older wings, you have older systems. This one in particular, though, does have steam distribution. So steam distribution is something that will definitely hurt your energy efficiency. So I heard you guys talking a little bit about that earlier, so that's something just to think about with this one being on steam. You don't get a lot of control with your temperatures, and you tend to waste a lot more energy than with a hot water distribution system. And you have limited air conditioning. This school, it was being, a lot of air conditioning was being added to this school and has been added, but still not a fully air-conditioned school. In that 2000 renovation, you upgraded your electrical service. You added a generator, but, you know, just like the mechanical system, you have new wiring, new panels in the newer areas, the 2000 areas, and then the older vintage, you backfed those systems at that time. You added a full sprinkler system in the 2000 renovation. This building does have a fire pump on there, so that's just of notice, so you're aware. That's just the only thing, that'll, is a little more maintenance on your end. And then you added a full fire alarm system, again, in 2000. Safety and security, it's identical to your last school. You have full perimeter cameras around the exterior of the school, and then you have your entry stations at your main door, so you're controlling all your access points to the building.
So just to summarize, I touched on the ADA accessibility. It's not a significant issue, but it is an issue relative to a few spaces and things like millwork. Upgrade of the toilet facilities, that's a consistent theme throughout all the elementary schools, in fact, even in the middle school. The exterior envelope, single-pane windows, addressing the site issues related to playground and drainage, access control, as I mentioned. And then, we found that there's a sanitary challenge in the 2000 addition that we're getting to the bottom of and trying to resolve. It may be a pitch or a clean-out issue, but one of the things that we identified. Programming, it's consistent with what we had mentioned at Terriffill. So, again, they're trying to take larger classrooms and divide them into smaller spaces to address a lot of the flexible intervention, specialized spaces, classroom needs. And the challenge is that it doesn't provide the adequate separation that you need to properly educate in that space. Squadron.
All right, for Squadron, there's a few key items that we found on the site here. The parent drop-off, the bus drop-off, the circulation is extremely confusing and very busy in the morning. They both use a single point of access, so the buses and cars, whether the parent drop-off or faculty, everybody uses the same entrance. Buses enter, take a left. Everybody else will go in and take a right. You got two lanes, one through lane and a parent drop-off in front of the school in that main loop area, very confusing, possibly unsafe if students get out of the left door and you got another driver going in the through lane, potential conflict there. The other area of concern is a couple catch basins that are actually crumbling inside. Some of the concrete blocks are actually collapsing. Those should be repaired or replaced fairly soon. Perimeter fencing, there isn't any where the number five is shown there. You got multi-use trails. You got trails in the back there. You have a water course. There's a fairly significant slope, and that's right adjacent to where the kids play. The pavement, sidewalks crumbling. There's a lot of alligator cracking, spalling. And then again, the access control. You wanna limit the who's coming out to the site and going to the side or the rear parking area as much as you can.
So those that aren't familiar with the site, you come into this one main entrance, you go up the screen, that's bus, down is parent drop-off. That bottleneck is a challenge. And I know there's, it has been studied. There's a grading challenge if you wanna go down towards the lower corner of the site, but we'll study options there. We know that options have been studied previously. So that is a concern. The remote play is quite a concern. We noticed it operationally, where you're bringing students basically from the building all the way up to four, which is on the top of the screen there. So from a function standpoint, that is not ideal. And then access control, similar comments to what I mentioned on the previous schools. And it's a simple fix, really. It's to control the access to the rear parking down near number six on the bottom of the screen, so that you can't have public during the day go back there, because there's, player is adjacent to that parking. So, it's a 50-year-old building. It's one vintage. As you can imagine, when, getting around 50 years old, there's a lot of work that needs to be done from an architectural and building systems standpoint. Summary, so the bones of the building, the structure of the building is steel frame, steel joists, gypsum roof deck, and then concrete floor slabs. So it's, has good bones. It's well-built. There's no bearing walls. There's no real concerns relative to the structure. Relative to the architectural components, ADA access, you have basically this split ramp that connects the core spaces of the building, the cafeteria, the gym, to the classroom wing. And that's not ADA compliant to today's standards. It may have been when it was built 50 years ago, but it doesn't meet the pitch standards, and you need intermediate landings for the travel distances. And there's really no easy fix here, because you're starting the ramp at either end of the hallway, right immediately adjacent to the core spaces in the classroom building. So there's a fix in there. It's just not an easy one. It also, the last bullet, I'll hit on it while I'm talking about it, it also is the point of a lot of congestion when students are changing between the regular classrooms and then using the core facilities, like at lunchtime, for instance. And that does pose not only safety, but operational issues related to timing of getting the students in and out of the particular spaces. Building envelope, there are various areas, single-pane windows, there's some flashing, roof support approaching in 20 years, so you guys start thinking about that. Inside the building, there's a large majority of the classrooms that have these folding partitions or temporary partitions, and they may have been a good quality originally constructed, but they pose a real acoustical challenge. And I know you've added permanent walls in many locations, but not all locations. This is just a consistent challenge throughout the interior of the building. If you walked through the building recently, the lack of natural daylight and the level of artificial lighting in the building, particularly in the classroom side, is difficult. So what we found is a lot of the faculty are leaving the doors open so they get borrowed light through the door, which is the picture on the right. So something to consider. So something to consider, I know you've gone through some lighting program upgrades at the various different schools, something, a point to consider. And then the gymatorium is in need of renovation, and I think that's an understatement, probably. And you'll see that in a couple of the schools coming up where the floor is basically a tiled floor. And that's the immediate concern that we would express, but just the overall condition of the space needs, needs to be looked at.
So like Jeff said, you know, the building's getting near the end of, you know, needing a lot of service right now, given the age of the systems. But in 2015, you did replace your boilers, so that was good. I mean, they were definitely at that time, meaningful to their life. We replaced those with new modern boilers. That's the photo in the upper left. And I actually love this company because they put a mirror finish on the outside, so it's an interesting product. You have all original distribution though, out of there. Your hot water distribution is all original from the existing building. And this building has an exhausted design. So typical of its vintage, what you used to do is you used to put an exhaust fan in the middle of the building, let that suck outside air in through the exterior envelope, and that would bring in your ventilation. So that's not up to today's standards, nor is school standards, but it was common at the vintage and it still does operate in this facility. And you also, like your other ones, you have limited air conditioning. In this school, you added air conditioning to some spaces, but not throughout. And just to caveat, because I thought about this from when we talked about this school of the town, when I do reference air conditioning, I am referencing permanently installed air conditioning. I do know programmatically in a lot of your classrooms, you do bring, especially in this facility, portable air conditioners in, but I'm referring to physically installed air conditioning in those spaces. Your electrical system is original from 1969, so getting near the end of its useful life. But you did add a generator in 2012 to back up this facility. And all your distribution systems are original to this building from 1969, which you can see from the older electrical panels in the bottom right-hand corner. This building does not have, is not fully sprinklered by classified by NFA. So you do not have a full wet sprinkler system in this facility. It was very common of this vintage to not put a sprinkler system in because like Jeff said, you have all masonry walls, all metal decking, very little combustibles. So they built the fire protection into the structure and not putting wet sprinkler systems in there. You do have what is classified as limited hazard, or limited sprinkler systems off your domestic system. So in some of your storage areas where you were prone to store combustibles, i.e. papers and books back then, you were required to put sprinkler heads in there, so you do have those in. But also in 2017, you upgraded your fire alarm system. So your fire alarm system, due to the fact that you do not have a sprinkler system, will be more robust, you'll have more smoke detection in the spaces to alert you if there was to be a fire. So you did upgrade that, so that's good. And then again, your safety and security, I could record what I'm going to say, but you do have the full perimeter coverage here, just like your other schools, and you have your entry stations that you've done at every other one.
Okay, so this is just a recap. It's 50 years old, so there's a lot of work to be done. These are the highlights. The ones that I would pick are fire protection, needs to be really, needs to be looked at. ADA accessibility, your roofs, your envelope are approaching their end of useful life. And then there's some site issues related to parent bus drop off, safety, security, pedestrian flow that we would address. And then of course, the gymnasium. So moving on to Latimer.
Yeah, so for Latimer Lane, I'll go through some of these items quicker. Number two, the ADA stair, there's a staircase that goes from the, the lower parking lot in the center of the, the site there, up to the school. The, again, just like the other school, the railing and stairs, the railing itself doesn't meet code. Stairs are crumbling, there's a lot of patchwork done to them already. You got the same situation in the play area, the outdoor play area, it's got some drainage issues, got some puddling. Parking lot capacity, there's a lot of students at this school. It's okay during the school day, but when you have events at the school, cars are parked all over the place, there's just not enough parking. You're not going to provide it that much parking for, to hold events like that, but there's probably a little bit of room to grow there. Loading access is okay, there's a little bit of drainage issues there. Access control going to the site, again, you have a similar situation as the last school where you have one large curb cut where that number eight is. The left side is for buses to enter the site, it's a one-way in. The right side of that is two-way traffic. So you have, you have faculty, staff, parent drop off going in on the right, and then also coming out while the buses are going in on the left of that. So it could get a little confusing, maybe some more signage to, to notify parents or faculty where they should be going, should be applied there. And then the student bus queue. Again, not sure if there's enough storage for buses to queue up there, if maybe they back out into the street. And then again, the access control. You want to limit the, the cars that are going around the side of the building.
So pretty well laid out as far as separation. Again, I think very simple fixes with access control during the day to check, to kind of guide people into that parking area, just a, a simple fix. The bus queue, number seven, as Ron had mentioned, we had talked when we were out there, the students, you'd like to queue the students up along that sidewalk, maybe look at widening that sidewalk, giving a little bit more flexibility so that you can have more flexibility in the operations of bus and pickup and drop off is really the concern. But a bigger site, so a little bit more room to move. So 1962 for the majority of the building. Why they didn't connect in the, the building in 1996, I'm not quite sure, but it does present some challenges once you're inside the building because there's a stair, basically right in the middle of the 1962 addition that prevents ADA access, access to the half of the building more or less. So you'll find that in some instances, students will go outside to gain access to, to the rear half of the building, so. Structurally, similar vintage to some of the other schools, so you'll see the steel frame, the gypsum decking, you'll see some tekton decking. The additions have steel frame, metal decking, so no real concerns structurally there. Architecturally, I already mentioned, not ADA compliant because there, there needs to be a ramp. When we started looking at it, there's a stair right in the middle. That should be addressed. Building envelope, there are some similar vintages, so you'll find the same things, single pane windows and portions, caulking, flash joints, those kinds of things around the, the perimeter. Again, well-maintained school, it's just time for some of these things to happen. The gymatorium is a bit of a challenge as far as the condition, also the height of the, the certain areas are, don't, are not conducive to the actual original intended use, unless you're 10 or 12 feet tall, so you can shoot down at the hoops. I don't have that problem, but, but I, there's, we did discuss when we walked through, we had our programmatic discussions and walk through, you know, potential reuse of, or rethinking, reimagining some of these spaces, because like the media center, for example, is undersized. Maybe kind of reinventing some of the more underutilized space or the spaces that weren't appropriately designed, but that's kind of into the next phase. I don't want to get ahead of myself. Inefficient antiquated storage in the areas, locker storage. I know you have a program that you're replacing lockers, but there are some areas of the building that have original lockers that just are a concern, that should be addressed. And then the building circulation, similar to the last project, the last building we talked about, is just the travel distance to get from one end of the building to the others is, is a bit of a challenge. And that does affect the daily operations and quality of the educational time that you spend in the building.
So there's an exception to every rule. In the last two schools, and I was saying the most of them, you did in your last renovation, upgrade all your services. Due to the size of this addition that you put on in 1997, you didn't upgrade any of your main MEP systems, infrastructure coming into the facility. So you just put the addition on and tied into it, which is very common for an addition of that size. So you have a lot of original systems in this facility. So you have your original heating plant, which was installed in 1982, or 1962, well-maintained, but getting near the end of its useful life. Original distribution systems, just like squadron, it is an exhausted building, so you just have the exhaust fan on the center drawing your ventilation air through your exterior envelope. And this one also has a limited air conditioning that's been installed. Your electric service is original to the building from 1990, 1962. You don't have a generator on this one, so that's something just to think about. Most of your schools do. Right now, all your emergency lighting would be through battery packs on the light fixtures or on wall packs on the walls. You have old wiring, old distribution, so it's all original to the building. This one, just like squadron, does not have a sprinkler system. So same exact design, same vintage, masonry construction, non-combustible construction. You do have some small sprinklers in some of the storage areas, but you did upgrade your fire alarm in 2012, so that is a good thing. And then your school safety and security is identical. You have your cameras, you've been adding around the perimeter, you continue to add them, and then you added your entry stations at the main door.
Okay, just to summarize, ADA accessibility, the toilet facility upgrades throughout spotty renovations, but a comprehensive plan is needed. Fire suppression system, we talked about the access control at the sites, some play areas, electrical distribution, as Derek just mentioned. And programming, it's a consistent theme, the smaller educational spaces for specialized and spaces is required. So this building is a, is a bit of a change of pace with its vintages and site.
Yeah, so for Central Elementary School, you got good separation between bus and parent drop off. One of the major concerns on the site is the ADA accessible parking spaces, they're so far from the main entrance. And the actual main entrance is questionable, whether it's ADA accessible or not. The sidewalk there is so steep between the curb and the front door. I believe that's not the door that they're using for access. It's, it's more closer to the, the eastern side where the number four is on the map. That's where, basically where, you know, you're, you'll park in the accessible parking spaces above that number four, and then go along the concrete sidewalk and into the door that's near that number four. Again, the, the bus loop, it's, it's separate from the parent drop off, but there's just not enough room in that bus drop off. The traffic backs up, buses back up out onto Masako, and cause some traffic issues out there. There's some trees that are a concern where that number eight is, there's some old trees in that area, limbs are falling. We suggest an arborist go out and either trim some limbs or take some trees down to, to ease some concern about students getting hurt.
Great. So I'll say it, the parent drop off is a concern. It's a, it's a danger. The way it's set up now is they travel through on the, the angled parking area, there's the sidewalks flushed to, to the pavement. There's not enough room to hold your child's hand as you get out of the car, if you have two kids. With people passing, it becomes a challenge. So the whole sequence of dropping parking, dropping off your, your child, getting to the building, whether it's at the main entrance near the three, or, or more towards the gymnasium or the center of the building, the sidewalks are, are, are small for the amount of folks that are, that are traveling that, that area. And at the same time, as you move further towards the bus drop off, you're now having to deal with buses as you're walking your child into the building. So there are some simple fixes here, pulling some things closer to the building, looking at some patios, and I know some, some studies have already been done, but that is a concern that we would elevate as a priority. The same thing with the, the bus drop off, and we think we've already kind of discussed generally some other options where, you know, you may be able to resolve both parent and on bus in, in a simple solution, a simple cost-effective solution that, that provides kind of a, a safe and welcoming environment for all of them. So it's an issue that, relative to the site, that I would, I would elevate. So vintages of, of the building, we kind of turned the building here, but the, the original building built in 1913 has held up well as far as the conditions, overall conditions. Same thing with the 1950s vintage, and I know in 1997, there was some modifications, not only the new construction, but also some, some modifications to the original building. So you can see there the, the various different vintages. Structurally, the original building is wood framed, a bearing wall, so kind of interesting wood roof and floor. But, but again, no real concerns identified during the structural walkthrough. The addition has some steel framing with a wood truss for the attic. Architecturally, not a lot as far as code concerns with age and condition relative to this building. It's, it's held up fairly well. There is a lower portion, a lower level, we call it, not a basement, of the original building, or the garden level, that is not used right now. It could be kind of reimagined for non-educational use, or we would recommend a non-educational use. So it's, it's space that exists today that, that could be repurposed. The envelope repairs, there's some isolated envelope repairs at the cafeteria addition out the rear, and at the new addition that we've highlighted in our report, not significant but issues that are concerns that we would think that you want to address relatively quickly to extend the longevity of the building. There are some, and hopefully CS wasn't the mechanical engineer, some units, electrical, mechanical units within the classroom, educational spaces of the building, and a couple of different locations, we have them identified in, in our plan and our report, that they are newer. We would want to contemplate some, a better solution to the, the location of those, whether it be separation walls or potential relocation. So we identified that. And then there are just a few portions of the building where you don't have full ADA compliance. There's a few offices up a few smaller stairs and, and the back music area, but not significant, I'd call it more minor, but there's still some concerns that we want to address.
So the 1997 addition, you did a substantial upgrade to the majority of this facility. The majority of the renovations at that time were comprised of the 1997 addition, along with the renovation of the 1950s vintage portion of the building. At that time, the 1913 portion wasn't touched to a great extent, that's been touched since then, and we'll touch on that in a little bit. So currently, this building has two heating plants. You have one that was put in 1997. You know, I, everyone, I always feel like 1997 was yesterday, but it's already 2019, so it's been a little bit a while. So it's getting, starting to have some age, but still in good shape. And that feeds the 97 and the 50 areas of your building. In 2005, you did replace your boiler plant in the 1913 portion of the facility. I, I wrote here, you have original vintage distribution system. So you have distribution systems that are from all three genres of the installation. I don't think you have very much from the 1913, but you do have some stuff from the 30s and 40s still in that portion of the building being operational. There's various HVAC types in this building. You have air handlers, unit vents, fan coils. It's a maintenance headache, I'm sure, for your staff because there's a variety of systems in there. And then just like your other schools, you have limited air conditioning through this facility. You have a good electrical service that was upgraded through that 1997 addition. You do not have a generator in this building. And again, like the mechanical, you have original vintage distribution systems. There is some very old electrical panels and distribution in the 1913 portion of this building. So that has been the area that has not been upgraded very much. You do have a full sprinkler system throughout the entire building, including all your attics, because those are required in the wood attics that was installed in the 1997 addition. And you have a new fire alarm system that was installed throughout the facility. And then your cameras and your security are identical to the other schools, you've been upgrading your cameras and adding your access controls required.
So summary, I'll hit the priorities, the site, bus drop off, I've mentioned a couple times already, and the pedestrian access, consider utilizing the underutilized space in the lower level. There are some toilet facility upgrades that would be considered in the lower level. And then programmatically, and it's a consistent theme that I didn't mention before, where if you do in fact have a, a bubble class where you have three of a certain grade level, what ends up happening is you have to chase that through the building because there's really, using every square inch of these facilities, and you're using it well for a variety of different purposes, but it, it does create an operational challenge, I can imagine, from year to year through the elementary schools. So that is something that we'll highlight in the report, we didn't necessarily highlight on any particular bullet point here, but it's, it's an important consideration when you're thinking, forward thinking to the master planning.
And just one thing in reference to number six, I didn't touch on it on my portion, but that is the upgrade in the mechanical equipment that Jeff mentioned are in the classrooms. Those are located in the 1913 portion of the facility. So those were done after your last major renovation.
So you already forgot about that.
He's got to remind me.
All right, home stretch here, hang with us.
All right. So for Henry James Memorial, the, some of the, the site features that I want to point out here, the, the, it's got good separation between bus drop off, parent drop off. You got three curb cuts there. The curb cut on the bottom is mainly for the bus drop, the buses to circulate through, faculty, staff to park. And then the parent drop off, and you got some parking along the front of the building in that, that front entry loop there. building in that front entry loop there. That area should be looked at for, to increase some parking spaces, maybe do some manual parking, additional accessible parking spaces, and improve that accessible route to get to the front door. The parking area in the back, there's one catch basin that drains that entire area, and I've heard that, you know, during some heavy rainfalls, it's just not large enough to accept all the stormwater, and you get some flooding in the back there. Access between the back parking lot to the front door, there is no sidewalk. You have to walk basically all the way up to the street or cut across the lawn area to get to the front door. So when Jeff visited the school, there was no parking available in the front. He walked all the way around.
Did you ruin your shoes?
No. It was ruined. And then controlled access. This is a fairly easy one to implement, where the number four is, you could do some sort of controlled access at that point to mitigate who goes in, who goes out. And again, you have pavement right up to the edge of the building in the back there where that number six is. Car could just drive in, hit the building, or dumpster area, loading area.
Isn't that a patio?
Yeah. That is the patio. Number six is patio area after cafeteria. And there's already some plans in place, I believe, to put some kind of barriers there to help protect the area. It's already kind of protected in the alcove, but that was just an item that was expressed during our walkthrough.
Okay, sorry.
No, no problem. So this building, as you can imagine, it's currently, or it's going to be under renovation in a few weeks here. So it was a bit of a challenge to kind of analyze from an existing condition standpoint. The vintages, you can kind of see here, we ghosted in where more or less where the, in the white, where the additions will be for the media center and the auditorium. Consistent theme though, where it wasn't really, no one portion has been fully renovated in the building. So I know you went through, two or three years ago, you went through hallway renovations and, you know, done a very good job with the programs and the funds available. It's just what happens when you do that is it compounds the issue where you put a new electrical system on an old distribution or old service. So those are kinds of things that long-term become challenges for the next renovation. So structurally, no real issues. Steel frame, tectum roof deck, concrete slabs in some areas, open web steel joists. We didn't observe any kind of concerns that we would highlight. Architecturally, I had mentioned additions, renovations, ongoing. So there's, consistent with this kind of step-by-step approach to renovation, there are going to be some leftover toilet areas that need, toilet chores that need to be upgraded, so we highlighted those. The kitchen cafeteria, the kitchen areas receiving, I think, some new freezers, but not a comprehensive renovation, so we're going to take a little bit closer look at, you know, all the kitchen equipment and see what's good, what could be in line for replacement, those kinds of things. Some of the classrooms and the millwork are not ADA compliant. We know some of that's getting renovated. Some of the ceiling tile areas were renovated, some weren't. So it's kind of more minor kind of list of items, but still, when you add it all up, it does fill out a good list.
So your mechanical system was upgraded in this building in 2014, so that's very good. Like your other facilities, you do have some original distribution systems in here. When you did your additions, you just added on to the systems and expanded them as required, so you do have some older piping in some spots of the facility. And again, this space, this one has limited air conditioning. I know you continued to add air conditioning to it through various projects. Your electrical systems, your main service was upgraded in 2000, but this school does not have a generator. It's one of your few that doesn't have a generator. There's nothing wrong with that, it's just something we want to point out. And again, this, like the mechanical, you have your original vintage distribution systems. For your fire protection alarm, this building currently is not a fully sprinkled building, but we do understand that that is going to be completed in the most current round of renovations. But you have a full fire alarm system that was upgraded in around 2012. Your safety and security is identical. You've added your exterior cameras and your entry stations to your main entrance vestiges.
Okay, quickly to summarize, the items that we would, will kind of look at with further detail to kind of sort out what's being renovated and what's not in this current project, toilet facilities, kitchen, outdoor areas, the drainage, and site drainage. And now we move to the last one, which is the high school.
All right, so for the high school, one of the main concerns that I had was just the condition of the concrete sidewalks and by too many sidewalks. The concrete's in really rough shape. There's a lot of patching. Most of them need to be replaced at this point. Drainage, number three there, there's some issue with water getting into the basement underneath the stage, I believe. We should look at that, possibly put in some perimeter drains outside, pick up that stormwater before, groundwater before it goes into the building. Paving is okay in the parking lot. It's not great. It should be replaced within, you know, the next five or 10 years. And then the bleachers out at the track, bleachers, there's been some discussion about expanding them, replacing them. They want to do some sort of snack shack, storage areas for the football games and the track events. And then finally, the athletic fields to the north, there's some concern because they're always wet. There's either some groundwater issues, some drainage needs to get installed, maybe some underdrains, get rid of some of that moisture in the fields.
So from an operational standpoint, when we walked through with the principal, the two concerns that we saw both, well, on the exterior and then some on the interior, where the top number three really is drainage because that is on the north side. It's relatively flat, so there's, it just, the water doesn't have anywhere to go. So what happens in the wintertime, it gets a little bit icy back there and muddy and things like that. So we would encourage you to look at some kind of drainage program back there because we know that's the drop-off, and particularly on the north side, it just is an ongoing maintenance issue that should be looked at. And then the bottom, the number three on the bottom of the screen is the original building, which is this portion here, I believe, and then that's the addition. The original building, the front face of that, may or may not have had some kind of waterproofing, but I don't know if the most recent addition changed the grading or something happening along the street there, and I remember hearing something about some improvements on the street as well. But it's a rolling hill. There's some subsurface water condition concerns that we have at the band auditorium area. It's an issue that, or concern that can be probably addressed with a French drain, something relatively simple, but just long-term is something to start paying attention to. So the vintages, this is probably the most recent renovation that you have. 1968 is in the brown, the 1982 is the back corner there, I believe is the shop. Then you have the modulators, which are still there today back in 2001, and then the comprehensive renovation, or mostly comprehensive renovation back in 2005. Structurally, not a whole lot of concern relative to the overall structure of the building. Just, it is a combination of a variety of different systems, mostly steel frame. There's poor gypsum roof deck in some portions. There's precast planks on the floor in some portions, but well-built, no issues, but they've all been working well together and no signs of any kind of deterioration. Architecturally, I mentioned the moisture concerns, and you can kind of see it in that top view here, and you know, I guess that picture kind of tells the lie. It's a little bit steeper than if you're standing out there. Just my concern, we wanted to locate, identify it. Lockers were not addressed, so the locker facilities, I'll expand it to locker, locker rooms, all the adjacent support spaces really need to be looked at, and that should be on the list. Consider the replacement of the modulators. I know they're used now. They're in okay shape. There's some drainage issues around them. Long-term, I think, you know, the stance on modulators is there should be a permanent solution, so we'll say that. Internal, there's an ADA ramp towards the, I guess, the rear of the school if you're standing out the street that does not necessarily meet by technical standards the ADA compliance, but it's close, so maybe consider a code modification just to put that issue to bed. And then the roof, and the roof end, I guess you'll hear more on, from Derek's, on the third floor. Temperature and atmospheric controls on the third floor have been, I guess, are a real issue. We were there early spring, so we didn't experience them, but...
I'm sure you can be invited back.
Yeah. I'm sure we'll be back.
We'll go back. I'm sure we'll be back.
First floor in June.
That's what we hear. So I listed, in addition to mechanical means, which you hear from Derek, if there's a re-roof scheduled, planned, which is coming up, you may want to consider, you know, insulation options to maybe try to, try to control that temperature should mechanical renovation eventually occur. Just try to keep a holistic approach to resolving the issue rather than just throwing a system at it.
So I tried to sum up, summarize this school in a few bullet points, but as all of you know, there's an extensive amount of MEP infrastructure in this facility. Overall, eighty to eighty-five percent of it, excuse me, was installed and/or replaced in your 2005 renovation. So the majority of your systems in here are in good working condition. The one thing, as Jeff did say, the biggest concern we heard from everyone in here was the lack of air conditioning in here. I don't want it to sound like a negative because it really isn't, because in 2005, it was not common to air-condition a school of this size. It just wasn't economically feasible. You were right, right before the bubble, you know, I wouldn't say right before the bubble, but shortly before the bubble of, you know, the early 2010, 2014, when air conditioning became predominant in all of the new schools. So you were right before it became more economical to put it in. So it is very common to not have an air-conditioned school of this vintage. But you did upgrade everything else, so that is, that's great. So you do have a good heating plant that was installed in 2005. The majority of your school is heated and ventilated, so you do have mechanical ventilation in all of your active spaces, so that's good. You do have limited air conditioning, like I just mentioned, and then the upper floors get very hot. So again, that third floor, and we just joked around, that was the biggest concern that we heard in the whole facility. Your electric system is in good shape. That was upgraded in 2005. This school's a little different. You have two generators. You have one that's a natural gas fire generator inside. You have an oil generator outside, so you have a nice redundancy here on that. And you have good distribution systems. You upgraded eighty-five percent of it. Pretty much the only thing that was existing was the shop area, and a lot of that was probably done in the eighties renovation. You do have a full fire sprinkler, fully sprinkler system and a full fire alarm system that you did in 2005. And then after that, you've been adding your security cameras and your access controls to these spaces. So again, you did a lot of really good things in 2005, so I don't want to dwell on the negatives, but the air conditioning is the only thing that was of concern that we heard.
Okay, so just to summarize, you've heard enough about the third floor. We'll... The drainage of the south facade, renovation of the lockers, there's four or five that were on the top list for the principal. Lockers included. Art suite ventilation issues when we walked through, that's a relatively minor issue, we believe, that could be repaired with some simple fixes.
So this is for the exhaust on the welding benches, so it wasn't operating properly. I believe it's more of a maintenance item or an installation item rather than a design item, so it probably could be functioned correctly with somebody that serves it.
Okay, so thank you for staying awake. I want to just summarize kind of the next steps. I know this is somewhat boring as far as the details, but this step is critically important to kind of analyze the value of what you have holistically, so that you can, before you step, jump into, you know, looking at options of any kind, understanding what you have in a comprehensive fashion is critically important, and sharing that with you folks, the community, is also important because we like to hear the stories and the history. You know, sometimes there's a lot of history behind these buildings as well, so that's...
To that point, none of us, I don't think it was boring at all. I think it was...
It's a little overwhelming, I guess, to hear about all seven buildings at once. It's a lot.
A lot of it, I don't think was surprising either.
Sure.
I mean, that's my takeaway, that I'm like, I'm not overly surprised by much of what you gave us. I mean, obviously, your mechanics, I was a little, I don't know so much about it, so...
But we know where it's at.
But doors and security, I mean, a lot of the things that we already are aware of, it's nice to see them all in one place, again, compared to, comparative to each school, so I thought it was very helpful. Anyone else have anything they want to mention?
No. You know, the first presentation was like, wow, all excited. Then we get to this presentation, I thought, oh goodness.
They don't want to see it.
But there was, there was a lot to digest, but I came with some way, some buzzwords. Original vintage, and almost, for some reason, I could be vintage too, so I kind of like that, original vintage. It depends how you use this in here. Exhausted building, old design, end of useful life. So these are just some of the things that, these are just some of the buzzwords that stick out with me, and each of the schools has, you know, seven to nine to eleven conditions, you know, with them, and, but, because they are aged buildings, they are aged schools, and, you know, over the years, we've tried to improve, rent out, do what have you. For some, it's not enough, but I think in terms of what we've been able to do over the years and years and years at the time with the budget was to, you know, at the time, improve the schools and...
I imagine many districts are in the same place we are.
And I do want to say though, you, your school districts have been very, your schools have been very well-maintained. You know, we do these in a lot of other towns, and you go in, and they didn't do the critical upgrades that you've done. You know, the fact that you've been proactive on your electrical distributions, on your electrical services, your boiler systems, your water heaters, your fire alarms, your sprinkler system, you know, those are the major components that make your schools function. So those have all been upgraded relatively recently in the majority of your schools, and they're in good working condition, so that is a good thing. You know, you will see a lot of that verbiage, you know, in the report, you know, because with a mechanical system and an electrical system, you don't know when it's going to go bad, it's like your car. You just want to do your preventative maintenance and get it done before it goes the wrong way on you. So you have done a lot of that, so I don't think it's all negative, but we just want to point out everything that's there.
Well, if you're doing a study, you got to do it right.
Yes, correct.
You got to look at every detail and then pick your, then prioritize for sure. You want to finish your summary? I'm sorry. Anyone else have anything else?
No, I would just say, this was a really important, for us, helping me understand the continuum of how this amount of information gets consolidated, talked about, and turns eventually into a plan.
Sure, sure. So, yeah, so next steps. So where we're at right now is we've collected and analyzed mostly everything on the existing conditions. We're ninety percent of the way through our study. We're going to finalize that, that piece. We're going to meet with the Facilities Enrollment Task Force, as I mentioned at the beginning in the presentation, to pretty much give a similar, if not the same, presentation so they understand it in further detail. And we suggested holding a public forum on the demographics and existing conditions and have it be more of a, I know this was lengthy, we can maybe cull it out a little bit, but, and provide some more detail online, but activate it as a workshop so that we can get people's response and reaction to the conditions. So that's kind of the, the next two, two and three are the next two meetings, and then we're going to take all of this information and start prioritizing it in a comprehensive capital improvement matrix, if you will, which Burke is excited for, right? He's living for this stuff. This has been his favorite meeting all year. So we'll have that, and what we, what we want to do is create this tool that we can, a living tool, so that if budgets evolve over the years, so we can take these improvements and slide them from year to year back and forth, so it can be this, this tool. So that'll be completed, and then, now we're going to start moving into looking at, now we have a handle on the demographics and the projections, and we know the conditions. We're going to start developing some options for reconfiguration, and it, some of it's going to be statistical, you know, number of students, this is what the capacity holds. We're going to look at capacity, efficiencies of buildings, and kind of let, just let the information kind of come to the top, and you'll start to see options form for consideration. And that, that process is going to happen, oops, I guess it's on this slide, yeah. Over the spring, summer, and then into the fall, we'll start developing and refining those options, and really, we can step off the gas or step on the gas. It doesn't, we don't need to go any faster. What's important is to get it right and get a comprehensive look at it and make sure that the community's understanding the process.
And participatory.
Yeah. So, so that is our proposed kind of steps. The next immediate step is just communicating this information to the task force, then to the community, and then we'll be working on, starting on some options and looking at things. So that's kind of what we have, and there was other recommendations, as Katie had mentioned, you know, we want to set up an email and a website so that all of this documentation can be posted and accessible to all, so...
That's wonderful, and I think that's really important because then people can do it when they have time to do it.
Exactly.
Because this stuff needs a lot of your energy to look through and be thoughtful through it.
So thank you for your patience. I appreciate it.
Do you want to have any other questions before they get off the hot seat?
No, it's great.
Thank you very, very much.
Very well done. Thank you.
That was great. Very helpful. Someone buy a lottery ticket and we have a perfect opportunity.
There are a fixed opportunity.
That was great. Very helpful. Exactly what we're trying to get to. We, thank you all for coming.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody.
All of our principals. Have a great day tomorrow.
Good night, guys.
Careful of the bears. That's all I was thinking about, all the perimeter. The bears can go over the fences. It doesn't matter.
The bears don't care about the fence. That doesn't bother them.
They come right through.
Yeah, I'll do it in a minute.
I'll be out tomorrow.
Two more items.
I think we're moving on to quarterly budget analysis. And I think that brings us back to Mr. Leclair.
So, we have two, two items, and I will be brief on, on this third quarter report. From a revenue point of view, we have two positive surprises in terms of our current year grant funding. So, the choice attendance grant increased a little over thirty-three thousand for the current year. And then, in terms of our excess cost grant...
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's been, the preliminary number has increased by twenty-two thousand nine, nine hundred eighty-four. So, we get seventy-five percent of our funding in one chunk. And on the last portion, we expect to hear sometime typically by the end of April, early, early May, what our final number is going to be. So, feeling fairly positive, given that we just got the preliminary number to go up, which was not anticipated. So, those, those two, recent developments. Looking at the pace of spending and the expenditures overall, you see that we're basically similar to, to the same period last year, just a little over seventy percent, our pace of spending. And I'm really going to just highlight several areas of transfer between our major groups, okay?
Yep.
So, looking at the instructional category, we have a small decrease of twenty-five thousand dollars. That twenty-five thousand dollars, we shifted to pupil transportation to meet a, a need for several outplace students. So, you see that, that small shift there between those two groups. In terms of insurance, there's a more significant shift there between insurance and our, and our operational plant of two-hundred thousand. So, we've seen an additional decrease since the last quarter last year of enrollment in our insurance program. Six, six fewer since our last quarter and continued shift to the high deductible health plan. Our current year budget, we are able to move funds to the operational plant section where we've really had a hard, a hard year. I updated the board in the, in the last quarter about a lot of our fixed pricing. The major issue this quarter is that natural gas where we heat most of our schools. That's the one pricing that's not fixed, that we float with the standard offer. The town and the Board of Ed both, both do that. We looked, and we continue to look to see whether or not it's advantageous to bid. And our consultant has said it's still best, the best deal is to do the floating price. But this year, we've seen, even though our usage is down, our pricing is up and there's a net increase in, in the natural gas. So, those are the, those are the major highlights. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to...
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Appreciate that information. Moving on to policy. Mr. Sullivan.
So, first of three sets of things that need to happen to make, make sure we can pass policies, which is an introduction tonight, an opportunity to respond in a second reading at our next regular meeting, and then a vote at the, at the third meeting. So, the way the policy revision process works, so we had a meeting about a month ago. Jen, now chairs that committee, Todd is, serves on that committee. So, they were at the meeting along with Lydia. And we reviewed the, these policies. They're prepared mostly in response to legislative changes that happened over the course of the previous year. And then, we wait for some advice from the attorneys and from Cabe to recommend to us potential policy changes that need to happen. My good partner on this is Katie Wild, who works on the policy revisions with me, and then we bring them forward to the board committee. The exception to that is a cycle that Todd Bjork, when he chaired the committee, and I had been talking about and that we implemented this year, which is rather than waiting only for kind of legislative-driven changes, is to look at series of policies at a time. And, and what we've created is a ten-year cycle where all policies will get looked at over the course of ten years. And that began with the first one that you received, which is a look at the Board of Ed, Board of Ed bylaws, which had not been revised since 2004. So, the way we worked that process is that Tara did a reading of them very thoroughly, came in and met with Katie and I. And as the board chair, we worked back and forth with her to make the recommended changes that you saw in the edits in your process, and then ran all of those changes through the policy committee. I would characterize most of those being around some of the ways we've done committee assignments and things like that. But you received the changes, and certainly, if you have questions about any of them, be happy to respond. But I just wanted to note that one as different in terms of something we're really going to try to be better about, looking at everything over the course of ten years and a start of a good process. The others, minority teacher recruitment policy was actually legislatively driven. I know that we've had a lot of discussion after our public forums about minority teacher recruitment. But even before any of that, the legislation had, legislators had mandated that there will be some kind of new state reporting. We don't know what it is yet, but that districts will need to share their minority teacher recruitment policy. So, I went looking to see if we had one, and we did. So, I was pretty pleased about that. But this is a minor revision, adding in an action that stipulates that I will participate in a consortium that CRAC has developed as, as a new effort in our minority teacher recruitment policy. Reports of suspected abuse and neglect of children needed a revision based on something for, known. Each district is asked to form a confidential rapid response team in response to any reports. And that was the addition that you saw legislatively driven. While we were on forty-nine hundred, you looked at forty-nine hundred point one, which the terminology about suspected and abuse and neglect of mentally retarded students is just, you know, dated obsolete language that we really felt that while we were doing the legislatively driven policy should be changed at this point. And that is also there for your review. Confidentially...
Can I stop you on that one for a second?
Yes, sure.
Including, I'm hoping, maybe retitling that one?
It is. So, that's what, in the, in the documents you sent, it's all been changed.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
So, moving on to the student series, the five thousand series, confidentiality, confidentiality and access to student records. The board members who have done these policies the last few years will remember a big push on data privacy a few years ago. This is a minor legislative clarification about notification about data privacy. It had been unclear from the original legislation whether any time there was a new purchase of software that you had to notify parents. That's the way the legislation was sort of written. This clarified that all you have to do is post it to your website and once a year, let parents know that this website exists. So, that, that was a clarification in our policy. Seclusion and restraint, fifty-one thirty-one, you will see not much changed in the language of your policy. The changes here happened mostly in the administrative regulations that, that are mostly in special education restraining students that, that need that. And it had to do with a legislative change of something clarifying, something called an exclusionary timeout, which is to seclude a child for a timeout in a non-disciplinary manner, sort of a cooldown period for kids. And we needed to update our administrative regulations to include that. Under fifty-one thirty-three, student discipline, we did two minor changes, noting language about including the potential of discipline based on off-campus behavior involving electronic communications that do have an impact on the functioning of the school. And also a clarification that discipline, under a long list of things that can be disciplined, a clarification, an addition about the use of hate speech in the school community. Couple more, fifty-one forty-six, drug and alcohol used by students and administering medications. This is much more about the administering medications. The, the legislation changed to say that students can now carry their EpiPens and they're allowed to carry them in their backpacks in a way that they were not before. They need a note from a parent, that, they need a note to the school nurse that, that everybody knows they're going to be allowed. But it's the idea that an older kid especially would know how to self-administer an EpiPen, and it doesn't do them any good if it's down in the school nurse's office, that they should have it on their backpack and, and that they should be allowed to carry it. So, that's a legislative change. Susan referenced earlier the diplomas and certificates of achievement. So, this is one that the policy committee sort of deferred to the curriculum committee. And last Thursday morning, we spent a good forty-five minutes with the curriculum committee going over legislatively driven changes to credit requirements for graduation. I'll characterize them this way. Kind of changing discipline specific. You, you think of the credits that you need to earn from high school as English, math, science, social studies. And this is sort of changing categories to say, you have to earn a certain threshold in humanities and you have to earn a certain threshold in STEM. And then, our policy revision clarified in Simsbury what that would look like. So, it was a long process with our department supervisors, a great conversation with the curriculum committee, and they recommended moving this forward to your full board after that discussion last week. And then, lastly, special education service provider agreements. This was a legislatively driven change that has to do with the fact that an IEP itself can't serve as a contract with an outside service provider, that it's requires the special ed department and the business office to enter into a contract and not just pass along an IEP. And that needed to be added to our policy. So, that's the reason behind all of those policies. Please know that this was vetted by your committee. It now gives you an opportunity, before we come to a second reading, to see if you have any questions that you want to direct toward me. And if we don't, then we vote on them at the next meeting. So...
What is humanities, half, half credit for humanities? What is the, what would that, what would the courses click?
So, what the legislation said is that all Connecticut students will need to have nine credits in the humanities. And then, that, what that had to include was, within the humanities, it had to include civics and the arts. There already had been a civics requirement. We, each school was then asked to define what courses in its program of study will count toward an arts credit. And we did that process. That was part of the discussion with the curriculum committee, where we outlined exactly which courses would count toward an arts credit. Overall, you have to earn nine credits in humanities and nine credits in STEM. So, I would suggest that what the, the state change was driving at is that if you think of traditional subjects, and you might take four years of English and four years of social studies as your humanities courses, I think by making the number nine, they're pushing high schools all across the state to say, you have to sort of force kids to take one more beyond those traditional. And then, if you think of STEM as four years of science and four years of math, but they demanded that the credit threshold be nine, that every student over the course of four years will need to take one more credit in the STEM, whether that's technology education, whether that's computer science, could be a wide variety of things.
What might be helpful? You broke it down for us, kind of what courses fell in what categories?
Well, it's right here. It's...
Yes, but there...
Oh, which courses? There's another doctor. I would like to see that.
And you could maybe share that for those who weren't on curriculum.
So, for the second, yeah, we'll forward that before the second reading so that you can see exactly what that is.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
There is, there is a reason behind all of these things. And I, that's what I'm trying to highlight, just why we bring these policies.
No, and I'm not, I'm not complaining at all. I'm just, I'm just trying to be educated.
Culinary arts is next step.
Right, right. Because it's more of a science in art, music, or more of a...
Art.
Amazing how you can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I would like to say that I just got word from the Board of Finance that the budgets, the, they both went to referendum. So, we will be having the referendum on May fourteenth and...
Slight increase.
With a slight increase.
Yep, the three-hundred-fiftieth, eighteen thousand dollars.
Yes, they, they, at the meeting today, they gave, they requested eighteen thousand dollars for the three-hundred-fiftieth committee.
The town's, uh...
The town's three-hundred-and-fifty years old next year, 2020. So, they've, they're creating a committee and they funded it, but with eighteen thousand dollars.
So, they can hold events throughout the town in celebration.
So, it could be a very big event. But anyway.
Squadron line's fifty and the town's three-fifty.
See, see?
You're on that squadron.
See. It's part of my history. Tell these guys a couple things. I'm just saying. No one asked me. So, I just want to make sure that the public knows that they need to get out and vote on May fourteenth because we have budgets ready to go. Also, I would like to do a shout out to Sam Curtis.
Oh, really? You're doing that to my daughter?
Yeah. She's not here. But congratulations to her. She made Allstate.
Yay.
Correct. Congratulations.
Well, her father's sitting here with us. So, that's really nice.
That's great.
So, congratulations to her and to you and your family. Our next board meeting, we're, I'm kind of hesitating because we're going, we're going to go into executive session, but I want to make sure I get out that our next board meeting is a workshop on Tuesday, May fourteenth. It'll be at Squadron Line Media Center. Do not forget. And it will be at six PM. And we will be, and so, just want to make sure you all go to the right place.
Be careful on the ramp.
And remember, yes, and walk carefully.
Make sure you vote before you get there.
And stop by Henry James on your way if you haven't voted yet. We should have had it at Henry James and we would have all, you know. I don't think there's ever worry about us voting on the budget. That's kind of our thing, is one thing that we do. So, I'm opening up to public audience. Does anyone want to share anything today? Thank you very much. And I would make, I would take a motion to go into executive session to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent.
Stop move.
Second, thank you very much. We'll be going into executive session. Thank you all for coming. I would imagine you're not here when we get out.
I really want to.
Unless you want to. Happy to have you wait.